You ready, Mr. Manager?
Yep. Two things today, Chairman and Commission. First, Annette and Kevin Baumhoff are going to talk to us about the strategic plan that we recently completed with the -- for the Aging Department. So they're going to give you a summary of that. And we'll talk about what this does and what it doesn't do for us after they're finished. And then Lindsay and Lorian are going to put Levy Live up and give you a demonstration of what we can do with that tool for the meeting tomorrow for budget. Two items today.
Good.
So with that, Annette, Kevin?
Yeah, I'm going to let Kevin start. He's been trying.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm Kevin Baumhoff. At the time we did this planning, I was with WSU, so I thought I'd come back and share with you what the process that Wichita State University went through. Is this where I'm supposed to say?
You're good. Yep.
Okay, microphone right there. Thank you. The work that Wichita State University did in facilitating the planning process. And then Annette's going to get up and talk about the detail of the plan. So what we did, to begin with, what we started with were a series of listening sessions in each of the counties of the AAA. And so in Butler, Harvey, and Sedgwick, we hosted listening sessions. We had about 70 people attend in total. The questions that we focused on for them had to do with what are their concerns, not only current but in the future. And I have a summary. There are many concerns that folks have in the aging population as well as caregivers for folks that are in the aging population. I have way more than I need here, but I'll pass them out and send these out. These are just a little background of some of the summary of some of the information. So we asked them questions about, and particular questions, what are your concerns about aging in your community and what issues or trends should CPAA be aware of as they plan? And you can see that list is varied. We combined it with evidence-based practice and research and gave an overview, produced an overview. It's actually a six-page overview of the comments, but I'm just giving you the 30,000-foot, one pager, front and back. And then we also asked the question, what are your hopes as you age in the community and what resources and supports do you need to make this possible? And those are on the backside, and it is encouraging to know that people do recognize that there are a great many things they are thankful for in these counties as resources that they use to live in the community. The focus was sustaining folks in their lives in the community. And so you can see that range of various concerns and challenges as well as strengths and resources that they use. Yes?
Who did you call? Who did you talk to? Did you, did I miss that?
We invited, every county invited a number of people from the area. So there were just, it was an open listening session type of environment. It wasn't a survey.
So like people who worked at senior living centers?
No, they identified people who attended the senior living centers or people that were aging individuals in their community, caregivers. Yeah.
Yeah, we worked with each of the counties. So there's a Department on Aging in Butler and Harvey County, and we worked with them and advisory council members to identify who to invite. So we had a wide variety of people. We had older adults, we had caregivers, we had professionals who worked in the aging field, we had people from the mental health arena, we had people from EMS, we had people from law enforcement, we had county officials, we had county commissioners, like I said, like he said, from each of the three counties. And so it was a wide variety of people from all kinds of, the meal providers, home health providers, in-home service providers. So it was really a pretty wide swath of individuals that would have information and interest and feedback for this. So we worked-
Do you have county commissioners from our county?
Yes, Commissioner Dennis was the, so each, for each listening session, one of the chairperson from each county sent the letter out and invited people to the first meeting. So Commissioner Dennis, Commissioner Hague from Harvey County, and Commissioner Wycheck from Butler County. Thank you. I knew I was, I was going to butcher that name. So it was a pretty wide swath, and we worked with a variety of people to help us identify critical and key people to invite.
There were actually two stages. The first one were the listening sessions, and then the data that was collected from the listening session. Some of those individuals were attended to a second meeting, invited to a second meeting. There were about 50 people at that, so 70 in the first round, about 50 or so. And the second round was to consider that information and to take it and combine it with both further research that was presented. We asked the question of that group, and that group did have a larger representation, I think, of like mental health providers and some of the people that you were mentioning there in terms of service providers in that group. They reviewed all of the input from the various stakeholders, and then we asked them, what's emerging for you from this data? What are the areas that we should focus on as we plan for the future? And that's where these areas that are elevated on the inside cover of the plan under Annette's report, these areas started to elevate. Comprehensive Coordinated System of Care, Housing, Transportation, Transforming the Perception of Health, I mean of Aging and Wellness, Chronic Illness and the Intersection of Mental Health and Aging. Those were the areas that started to elevate out of that. With that same group, we asked them, what would success look like in the coming three to five years if we were to make progress on those areas? So they identified the focus areas, and then they defined what success would look like, and then they made recommended strategies. And so we collected all of those. So that was the second stage. So you have the input from the stakeholders, then you have the planning session with the stakeholder representative group along with provider groups and provider representatives. And then what we did after that was, we met then with a smaller group, and we drilled down into the actual plan. And in that group, those are primarily people who are with the CPAA's to help to decide what will be the actual goals, what would be the performance measures for those particular goals, what would be the objectives, and then what are the actual action plans, the action steps, and I'll put those into a timeline format. You are not generally going to get the public to participate in that level of detail. And so our process involves this sort of cascading of input and involvement in decision-making. And then that came down to this final report that you have there in front of you, which WSU collected, the Community Engagement Institute collected all of that information from the various meetings that we facilitated and put it into this format. And I believe Annette's going to talk to you more about the detail. But more than anything else, I just wanted to be available to answer any questions you had about the process that we facilitated.
Any questions?
Is there more? Is that the end of the presentation?
No, I believe Annette's going to now dig into the actual detail around some of the action plans.
I got a question too. You may answer.
Okay. Okay, so I just wanted to give you a little bit more background on this. So when we started the process, what we started with was really a deep dive into data, into trends. So we really did about a month's worth of work looking at and gathering data supplied to supply to WSU, Center for Engagement. So we gathered all kinds of data on the current trends and current issues, the top trends, top issues across the nation, looking at the nation because that also trickles down to both the state and the local level. So we gathered information on things like mobility and transportation, health and aging. We got some information from CDC. The United Health Foundation did some, had some work on communities and health. The United States National Aging Council had done a national survey. We had some local data also, our call center data. We have a pretty robust call center. So we had several years' worth of data so we could identify at the local level, what are the calls coming into that statewide call center? What are their issues? What are they doing? What are they needing? We looked at AARP, State Scorecard on Aging, the Older Americans Profile, a Community Assessment Survey, some dementia-friendly briefs to look at the issue of dementia, some financial issues briefs, information on housing, housing needs, the housing market, future trends with housing, needs for home modification, home repair, looked at some information on reframing aging. There's a lot of work on that right now to really look at the issues impacting the older adult population related to ageism and how that impacts policy and funding. So there's a lot of work on that, a lot of discussion at that at the national level. Looked at the census data, looked at local census, looked CDBR data on the growth in the population. So all of, a lot of that was then sent to WSU. They did a compilation of that and then presented some kind of an assessment, a summary of that as we started those discussions. And then we had a PowerPoint at the first meeting to kind of help frame the issue. So everybody comes to that meeting with their own perspective, but we also wanted to provide them kind of a bigger picture, a bigger understanding, because we all have our own certain perspective of things. But we wanted to inform them of that as they started that work. So they were really pretty robust sessions, a lot of discussion, a lot of feedback and a lot of input. Both, all three of those initial listening sessions, then like Kevin said, that was then kind of distilled and analyzed and then brought back to that larger group to really start working on that. So then we have the strategic plan. So just kind of go through the strategic focus area, number one, and these really aren't in order of importance, they're just in disorder. So Comprehensive Coordinated System of Care, it's a little esoteric in what that is, but really the goal is, the more important meat of that, is that older adults, caregivers and persons with disabilities have the knowledge and resources needed to live and age with dignity and choice. So what we know from lots of national data, from the Elder Care Locator Center, it's a national call center that the, on N4A, the board I sit on runs, and even from our own call center and some surveys that have been done, most notably AARP did one a few years ago in the city of Wichita and the surrounding areas, and they had over 1,000 respondents. And out of the top 10 issues, five of them were related to people don't know where to go to start. They don't know what their resources are. So this was a really important one, is to help people, we need to work on that, having knowledge and resources. So an objective is to improve information sharing across the community, that older adults, persons with disabilities and caregivers have user-friendly access to community resources and information. So there was a lot of discussion at the meetings about what does that look like? Is it just internet? Is it Facebook? Is it social media? It needs to be a wide variety because people have different abilities and different access to information. So we have dashboards for all of these, increased number of call center contacts, increased percentage of high satisfaction ratings, following contacts, increased information referral assistant contacts, and doing some social marketing that elevates CPAA and that all of our department has a go-to resource. So then I'm not going to go through all the details for all the timeline, but that's kind of that area. So the next, oh, yes?
So on page four at the bottom, and I'm assuming that the management team, 1.1, management team and program staff is, will work on 1.1.
Yes.
Director of Information will be 1.2, Management-
So that's the champions. We'll involve others, but we needed to identify champions so that we make sure there's a go-to person who has that responsibility. So that's just the champion. It really doesn't list out everybody that would be involved with that.
What's the difference between 1.1 and 1.3? Management Team, Program Staff is one?
Oh, so that-
And then the team, what's the difference?
Management Team and Program Staff. So that's a variety, whereas number 1.2 is the, 1.1 and then 1.2 as far as the champions?
She's right.
Well, 1.1 says Management Team, Program, and are those two different? And then 1.3 is Management Team. Are they not the same?
So for each, each point, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, there's different champions. Yeah, it corresponds with that.
It's not an action step unless it has a responsible party. That's what we're basically saying. Somebody has to drive that action step.
Okay. Strategic focus area two is housing. The goal is that older adults have safe, accessible and affordable housing needed to age in the community, and that there is a new conversation in our community around innovative housing for older adults. So I've been in the aging field all of my professional career, and that's been many years. And housing has always been one of the prime issues impacting older adults. In order to remain safely in the, in the community, they have to have options for different types of housing. So on a continuum, from individual to subsidized to small living or HUD housing, so a wide variety. So the objectives are to increase housing options that reflect the needs and desires of older adults, and that older adults are aware of options for home modification and maintenance. More and more, we see older adults are staying in their own homes, but their own homes often are inaccessible or need repair or need some kind of modifications to allow them to remain there. That's a really big issue, both at the local level and at the national level. It's a big trend. So you see the dashboard measures, you see we have 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3. This is kind of, this one will stretch us a bit because it really begins to talk about working within the community, talking with builders and with, around zoning issues. So it really is a really wide-ranging, lot of issues going on with different kind of zoning across the country that allow for different type of housing options for older adults. And as that population increases, that will continue to be a big need to really work with both builders and policymakers around zoning. Yes?
Are you, is there a person that's the CPAA Executive Director? Is that you?
That would be me.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Focus area three is transportation. So the goal is to expand provision and coordination of transportation to service, for services to older adults, persons with disabilities and caregivers. Again, a very important component, to be able to remain in the homes and communities, you have to be able to have transportation. Older adults outlive their ability to drive for about 10 years, and so this is a very important issue. And what we see regionally is also the importance of coordination of transportation. There's a lot of individuals coming in from outside communities, coming in from outlying areas to the medical services here in this area. We work a lot with KDOT, and they have been very focused on the coordination of transportation, both internally, both rural and within the city limits. Because if you're, as you know about transportation, there's lots of different silos of funding. So trying to make those work better to coordinate across rural, urban, and suburban. Objective is to increase and diversify funding for accessible public transportation options for older adults, caregivers and persons with disability, improve the coordination with transportation providers across the region, and increase awareness of existing transportation options. In the Midwest, most people have never rode a bus or used public transportation. So when they become in need of that service, they often don't know a thing about how to access it or how to use it. So it really is focusing on how do you increase the awareness and help people, basically train people on how to use those resources. So it's not so frightening. And it is kind of confusing to try to step on a public bus. How do you pay for it? How do you go to the, where does it stop? How does that work? People don't know that. So again, we have 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3. So we have lots of work to do in that area. And on many of those, on many of these, we have already started working on this, these Strategic focus area four, Transforming the Perception of Aging and Wellness. The goals, the circumstances of older adults are well-understood and addressed, and older adults and supporters are empowered to confront ageism. So as I said, there's national information on this, national trends, but also this was a very robust discussion around those listening sessions and with those populations, about how ageism and how these issues impact funding, how they impact policy, and how they actually in fact, impact the health and well-being of older adults themselves, both through internalization of those negative perceptions, but how that impacts their ability to really be more engaged and more involved in, in society. So the objective is to, education on aging is available to all people. Some of that is around the population changes, the demographics, but also the skill set and the resources that older adults bring to our community, and how do we capitalize on that? Reduce stigma associated with aging and increase health and wellness services offered by Central Plays Area Agency on Aging and the Department on Aging. Truly look at, there's a lot to maintaining people's health and maintaining their health and wellness. There's a lot of new programming, different kind of programming, chronic disease self-management, some of the programs that actually being offered right here for county employees, chronic disease self-management, diabetes prevention programming, smoking cessation. So there's a lot of activity that people can take to improve their health and well-being. So strategic focus area number five, Chronic Illness and the Intersection of Mental Health and Aging. So there's a lot of crossover between physical and mental health. So this really is looking at that. So the goal is, and this, I don't know that Kevin mentioned this, but this is a living document. This will change and grow over time. So this is a little short here, but I'm sure that that will grow over time. There's a lot of work to be done in this area. So it's just kind of the beginning phase of that. The goal is to, community-based mental health services appropriately address the needs of older adults, and that chronic illness care improves quality of life and prolongs independence. So we know that mental health is a, is a big issue that impacts older adults. There's some limited availability for specialized mental health services for that population, a need for more trained specialists who deal with aging and mental health issues, that kind of intersection there. Also some more flexibility in how those, where those services are provided. So the goal, the objectives are that the department and providers reduce barriers to mental and chronic illness healthcare for older adults, to increase identification of mental health issues and referrals to appropriate services, and that caregivers are educated about self-care and are aware of mutual support options. So caregivers play a big role in all of this. They're very involved with older adults in helping make sure that they get the services and supports they need. So we have 5.1 and 5.2. Then the last page just talks about how, how that moving forward will happen, and then kind of you have a visual demonstration of those timelines. Now, this is just a strategic plan. It will help guide the activities for the next three to five years. But this happens, is overlaid on top of the other programs and services we already do. It just helps to give us a focus and a target. So as we're looking at issues and opportunities, because as Kevin said, when it comes to aging, aging is everything. You know, it's everything you do now, but when you're 75, 80, 85, you know, it's, it's everything. So it's really, it really is critical to prioritize and focus on where are the most critical needs, where is it most important to put our efforts and also our funding and our resources. So we're hopeful to use this for helping us keep our focus and keep heading in the right direction, to focus on opportunities in this area, but also to help us figure out how to use scarce resources to meet those needs that a lot of people contributed to, helping feed into this. What are the issues? What are the areas? Where do they see the priorities that we need to be focused on in the future?
Questions for Annette?
I have one question. So CPAA, in the past, I guess my understanding has been, there's been some shared services because there's grant dollars typically that flows as a grant award, if you will, for three counties together. Outside of those grant dollars, is there other things we're doing with other funds that would be partnered with those other two counties?
We do serve as the administrator for the Coordinated Transit District, number nine. That actually is seven counties, and Butler and Harvey are involved in that. We work with them on transportation. There's some other, so the transportation area is a big one. So that would be some coordination, and we're doing some coordinated, did some regional work. We're looking at some opportunities in that arena. Other grant funds for the Aging and Disability Resource Center, so that's not under Older Americans Act, but that is a component of CanCare, the privatized Medicaid. So we have funds that come down through the state for that, and that, through those funds, we do the assessments, all the Medicaid assessments for individuals on the frail elderly and the physically disabled waiver, the pre-nursing home assessments for anybody seeking nursing home placement in the area that's going into a Medicaid or Medicare-funded nursing home. We also do options counseling and the call center through those funds. We also get funding through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the Farmer's Vouchers, the Senior Farmer Vouchers, and that goes out to three counties. So there are other opportunities potentially that, that would come, that would be regional like that.
It's just hard to, I guess, it's hard to imagine a, you know, such a large region, you know, if it was centrally focused to say, I assume that most of the management of the services is from, from Sedgwick County, I would assume, but the two other counties are very large counties as well, together constitutes about 100,000 people total. Our county is about half, half million, and theirs is about 100,000 total between the two of them. So just, it's just a curious thing, I guess, that-
Well, the State, State Unit on Aging is the ones who designate area agencies on aging. We were designated. CPAA moved to Cedric County in 1980, and the State Unit on Aging designates. They range in size from one county, which is Johnson County, all the way to a 26-county region out in western Kansas. But we work very closely with Butler and Harvey County Department on Aging on these, and even involve their commissioners, as you know, for the area plan and some of the senior care. So we work closely with them on those. They are part of the inter-local agreement that forms CPAA. So yeah, it is a large area too.
Thank you.
So is this a question for the manager? Would this be the cornerstone of your comprehensive review of that?
Yeah, we can talk, to me, what this gives us is a starting point for the comprehensive plan that we need to talk about. What it doesn't give us, I think Annette and her staff have done a great job of setting us up locally on prioritization. What it doesn't do for me is tell me how we compare up with other aging departments around the country, best practices, kinds of questions, the amount of funding that we're throwing in or that we should add, or, and into what areas should we add of the 16 services or the multiple services that we provide? It doesn't quite get us there yet, so that's, to me, the next step.
Yeah, okay. The other, just my quick observation, that looks like a lot of work, so thank you. But, so you get all this information, it's a, to me, I mean, the challenge, I don't know the answer, but how do you communicate some information and results and everything else and service offerings and to the, to the aging, especially rural? I don't know. They watch TV. I don't even, but I guess you, you mentioned communication here. I think that's probably your biggest challenge, is how do you, how do you tell everybody? Just my quick-
That is a very, very big challenge. I mean, that is certainly, like I said, those results from that survey that AARP did, and pretty much any national survey, any national call center, that's the issue. People don't know where to start when they need services. It's usually a crisis situation, and they don't know where to start. So trying to get, figure out a way and work with marketing and other professionals to figure out, how do we message that and how do we get that out?
So I wonder if, you know, storytelling goes a long way, and being able to understand what other people have experienced. For example, I have my mother-in-law, her father is moving here, he has Alzheimer's. Well, where does she even start? Does she call you and say, hey, my, my dad's moving here, he has Alzheimer's, what do I need? And that is a really, I mean, that story can be told a ton of, a ton of times. You know, my, my grandpa won't get any services, but he can't get around in his house. Who do I call? So I think we have to utilize storytelling to tell these stories. You, I mean, this is great, but to me, this is a big information dump that tells the public nothing, really. And maybe this isn't for the public, and I get that, but how do we take this information and translate it to somebody who can understand what to do with it? That would be my biggest thing, as far as helping people really understand what's available as far as what somebody else has experienced.
Sure, and I think storytelling's a really good example. We need to work more closely with our comms department and make sure that they help us tell the story. We've got a number of different outlets in the community that we work with, but we need to get better at it. And the storytelling is an interesting idea and one that I think is- And the storytelling is an interesting idea, and one that I think is really a powerful tool that Annette and her staff can work with comms to do better on. But, you know, as Annette mentioned, communication of this whole, of their services is a really big aspect of the work that they plan to do on the next three to five years.
So, if I understand correctly, to summarize kind of the process, you had about seventy people got together, had a couple of meetings about six months ago, roughly, and that's what this document is based on, is those two meetings, apparently?
Well, we had three, one meeting in each county, and there was a...
Okay, three meetings.
So the seventy was after that. So that was, what, thirty, twenty to thirty people at each of those sessions? And then the final session was about seventy people that came together.
Those three meetings were for those counties specifically, so we only attended the one for Sedgwick County and then the final meeting, perhaps?
Right.
And is there anybody from the Sedgwick County Agent Advisory Board on that, involved in this?
Yes, the chairperson was, and we kept them apprised of this, yes.
Well, to me, I guess, I just, and I appreciate the work that's been done, and it's a nice document, but I would say, I had no awareness this was even going on. I would have liked, I guess I would like to at least be aware of it, so I can know whether or not certain things are, I care about or being represented or even discussed at some level, but it is, it's obviously a mature document. It's already been implemented, and some of these points are already being started last January, so, thank you.
So, so like, for example, how are we partnering with other people in our community to, for example, like Strategic Area Focus Four, four point two point five, develop a regional fall prevention coalition and expand fall prevention programming? So I used to work for Kindred Hospice. They have an incredible Well Kindred at Home, which is their assisted services. They have an incredible fall prevention program. You know, there are so many companies in our community that are kind of already doing this. Are we partnering with them? Because if something's already invented and it's working, you know, it could save us time from having to come up with one on our own.
So under the Older Americans Act, we have funded, we have an evidence-based best practice program. That's, Older Americans Act Title III D requires that you have, fund a evidence-based program in the disease prevention health promotion. So that's a fall prevention program. And so we have worked with senior centers and other community partners, both locally and across the state, to provide that training so that they can go out and do that evidence-based programming. We have worked in the past with a PhD-level nursing student to do some work around developing some messaging, and trying to get out into the community and talk to a variety of providers about fall prevention, trying to get in with physicians, to talk with them, to help identify people that are at risk of fall prevention. So the desire to have a regional fall prevention coalition, we have not reached that part of this work yet, but we will be reaching out to community providers and others that we know that are having success and doing great programming like that, because we do know that there are multiple organizations that do that. So that will be the plan. So one of the other things that we do to kind of reach out to the network is we have a monthly aging network meeting, where we get anywhere from sixty to eighty different professionals that come together, and they get to network, and they talk to each other, and we do presentations, and we have best practice presentations, and we have different providers come and update everybody on what they're doing. So that's, and there's a few groups like that that we're involved with, so that we can have those connections and know what's going on, and try to figure out who we need to partner with and how we reach out to those. So certainly, if anybody has information or ideas or people that we should contact as we move forward with that, we would be very appreciative to have that. So if you have information, Commissioner Cruz, that would be great for help us move forward.
Well, that makes me ask another question. So if you have somebody who needs home health services, who do you partner with in the community? Or do you guys have home health services that you offer?
Right, so we have contracted vendors that we work with. We have a Older Americans Act ninety-day short-term program. There's four people that are transitioning from either the hospital or nursing home back home. It's a short-term program, and we have a group of providers that we work with that are contracted vendors and that have a contract so that we can pay them. And then, under the Senior Care Act, which is a statewide program, we also have vendors. I will tell you that the rates we pay are less than private pay rate, and we have recently encountered some difficulties. We have lost providers, so we've had some limited capacity. We're just getting ready to hopefully sign up three new ones, because what happened was we had to not put anybody new on the program or extend any additional hours, because we didn't have providers who could provide that service. So that's, that's a challenge, some limited capacity and some funding issues for, are lower than private pay rates.
Commissioner Dunn? Thank you very much, Annette. This was very thorough. From what I remember, the genesis of this, was that from Commissioner Dennis last year when we were going through the budget, discussing the priorities, when he publicly asked for this strategic review, or was this in place before that?
No, that really got started last year, so yeah. I mean, I think your comments certainly highlighted the need for information so that we can have data-driven decisions.
Yeah, yeah, that, I mean, that's what my memory was telling me. So I appreciate Commissioner Dennis starting that, because I think it's valuable. In regards to what Commissioner Cruz said, to disseminate this information, I really think we need to have a better relationship with the Medical Society of Sedgwick County, because I would assume every senior citizen in Sedgwick County has a primary care physician, and maybe also work with the FQHCs. But if we were able to give that to them and have some type of a packet that we could produce that says, okay, these people at a certain age are eligible, we as the county should give that to them and just put it through that network, because we know we'll touch a whole lot more people than just putting something in the newspaper, just working through the senior centers, where we know we're only going to be hitting a percentage when we can virtually cover everybody, and then also with the VA, too, just to get that out. Because I do agree, we should do a better job of getting this information to that aging population.
The other thing I'd like to point out is we have an opportunity through Active Age to put our information in there, considering that there is funding through us to them. So I'd like to see some more information in that regard.
That's a great point, but I don't know what their reach is.
Fifty-three thousand.
Fifty thousand households.
Okay. Fifty-three thousand households, that's bigger than West Shaw Eagle.
I still want to see how those are selected. Sorry, excuse me.
It's three counties, too.
Okay.
It does go to three counties.
Okay, I was gonna say, I find that really...
Yeah, it's good. I think it's sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand people, yeah, that's a bigger region than, yeah, okay, stunning, really.
But the problem is, they don't have anything in other languages, like Spanish and so forth. I don't know that they're reaching all the population we need to reach.
Put a doctor's office, generally. Okay, thank you, Annette.
Thank you, Annette, we appreciate it.
Just two things real quick. There's also, on a national level, some exciting things going on, particularly with Strategic Focus Area Four, where we're trying to change perceptions, where there's hookups between school districts and seniors, which I think is worth exploring here, that I think Annette and her group will look into, and that's kind of what we want to do, the national, the comprehensive study for, just to see what's going on and what the potential is out there. And it's interesting to note, and you've heard me say this during budget, this is an increasing population, we know it is. We're at, is it thirteen percent today, Annette, where we're at with the, in Sedgwick County, and it's going to rise fairly dramatically over the next few years, and it's going on across the country. So I don't think we can spend too much time analyzing and looking at this, at the topic of the aging department, which justifies not only a strategic plan, but another outside look. And the gentleman that spoke last night at budget is spot-on. It needs to be a neutral, outside, probably academic institution that takes a look at this next step. So we'll keep you tuned in on that and aware of what we're doing.
Can we make sure that we, we look at a population that is reflective of ours?
Yes, yes, I think that's one of the criteria, that it has to be a matching county of similar population size with one large city and other small cities. We'll try to match it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Before we move to the next, here's my notes for today's staff meeting, and right at the top I had, we were supposed to recognize Commissioner O'Donnell, yeah, I'm gonna do it, for his, it's his birthday today, and I forgot, I was supposed to kick the meeting off that way. Now, I'm getting...
I'm glad you did.
I'm getting many text messages saying, saying, but I will pass that. I'll let that up to the chairman at the end of the meeting, so, but happy birthday, Commissioner.
Thank you.
And with that, I think we're ready for Levy Live now?
I was hoping you would have skipped that, Tom.
Yeah, what number? Thirty-four.
Pete and I are both millennials, right? Which does original millennial? That's what I actually, I tell people that. The original millennial, which does. It's a great spot.
We're on TV, right?
Not on PBS. This gets like six views.
Okay, all right. Not sixty thousand.
The technology is beating me. Okay. All right, good morning, Commissioners. This is gonna be the most exciting thing you hear about all day.
Okay.
Right, it's gonna be riveting. So, as Tom said, this...
My birthday's more exciting.
I'm sorry?
Nothing, just that my birthday, I thought was more exciting.
Yeah, I mean, maybe a little, but not a lot. So, sorry. So this is called Levy Live. It's essentially a scenario builder. It's a tool that budget had created many, many years ago, and we have used intermittently over the years. We'll have it ready for you all tomorrow, if you want to do it. We typically will bring this out when there's some complex motions or lots of activity that we expect, and so we'll have it ready to go, and then we'll kind of take our cues from you all as to whether you actually want this to be pulled up. So you have a sheet in front of you, and these are basically the categories that we can use to figure out how to amend the recommended budget. So what you all will consider tomorrow is the document that Tom presented, and nothing else. So in order for there to be any changes from what had been recommended back on July seventeenth, we actually have to have a motion from you all that's supported with three votes. And then, once we have made, gone through all of those changes, then we will adopt a final overall budget for Sedgwick County. And Lorian will have these at your seats in the morning, and she'll be running Levy Live. But what will happen is you will have this, so know to look for this color. This is your county overall budget motion. You'll have fire overall motion, but then if you have communicated that you want some motions, we'll have those ready for you and sitting at your, each individual desk. And then those will be what you read, and we can capture those in this tool. So let's say, for example, that you want to add a hundred thousand dollars to finance, because you just really like me, right? So what would happen is, we would go into this spreadsheet, and so what you can see at the top is we have a proposed budget of four hundred thirty-seven point three million across all eight county property tax-supported funds, because we do have some strategic drawdown of fund balances in some funds. We are estimating a deficit across all eight of those funds of one point four million dollars, and that's okay. That's what we want, that's a part of a strategy, and we can talk more about that tomorrow if you guys want to. You had approved a maximum property tax levy for Sedgwick County that's aligned with that Target Mill Levy Rate Resolution of twenty-nine point three five nine mils, and so that is what the property tax levy equates to, based on that targeted rate. And then that is all based on twenty-nine point three five nine mils of our estimated assessed value of one, five point one billion. And of course, in November, the clerk's office will provide us with that final real number, and we'll get an adjusted mill levy rate. So depending on how you tell us to change the budget tomorrow, and we'll go through this sheet here in a moment, what you'll see in this blue column, VOCC deliberations, are changes either to the budget, or to the forecast, or potentially no change at all if we're transferring money around, so that you can see what the bottom-line impact is of each of the decisions that you all will consider tomorrow. So what we'll do is come in here, and you'll say, give finance money. And of course, we'll have a real justification, and we'll type that in so that we have a record of that. A hundred thousand dollars. For the most part, tomorrow, we'll talk and focus on our tax funds, so I'll say that the fund type is going to be our tax funds. And then the funding source, this is where there's a dropdown that offers each of these options. So the first option that's listed, it says expense from property tax. And you can see that in the description column, it tells you what happens to the budget, or what happens to the forecast, depending on if this option is selected. And then over on the far side, it's a much simpler explanation. You can see if it's impacting the budget and the forecast, or if it's impacting the property tax rate. And so at this point, you all have set your maximum, and so we wouldn't want to increase, bless you, we wouldn't want to increase the overall expenditure budget or the overall levy at this point unless you want to start all over, and please, please, don't make us. So option two, then, is an expenditure that would be funded with other fees or other revenues. And so generally, what that would be is, let's say you wanted to do a ten percent increase to the fees that the Regional Forensic Science Center charges. You could do that, and then it wouldn't have an impact necessarily on the forecast as long as we're spending that money, which is what this scenario is trying to draw. So I don't foresee that as being a real option for us tomorrow, but it could be. So then the third option you'll see is an expense out of cash. And so if we wanted to do an increase in the budget and fund it with fund balance, fund it with cash, this would be an option. But again, we don't necessarily want to change the budget tomorrow, so I don't see this as a great option. So then we get to option four and option five, and I think this is probably where we're going to be living tomorrow, with some of the potential changes I've heard discussed. So option four is an expense from transfers. And so you can see the description says, for the budget, we're taking it from one program area to another. And so in the past, an example of what's been used is like economic development, or if we wanted to shift money within a department that's already been allocated. This would be an example of moving it from one spot of the budget to another. And you can see across here, there's no impact to anything, because we're already planning to spend that money. And sorry for you guys sitting in these seats here, I'm looking at the handout in the far-right column. So you can see there's no X's, we're just moving money and moving forecast authority from one spot to another. So simple, easy, no real impact. So then an expenditure from contingency, and this is going to be the example I'm going to use. So let's say you want to go ahead and give extra money to somebody, you don't want to take it from somebody else, you want to take it from a contingency. So what we would do is go into this funding source dropdown, and we would pick expense from contingency. And you can see, right now, nothing's happening, because we have to go ahead and say we want to include this. And so we may type this in, but we, depending on your feedback today, we may or may not click this checkbox to include it until before or after you've had your motion, or before or after there's been some discussion on the motion, even if we haven't said we want to fund it. So you can see what happens in this case, and I'll make it a little bigger. You can see the overall budget didn't change, but our forecasted deficit just got bigger by a hundred thousand dollars, because it's coming out of a contingency. And again, we don't typically plan to spend out of a contingency. So just realize that if any motions tomorrow you make relate to the operating reserve, then this is how that's going to play out in this scenario builder. And again, what we had talked about at the beginning of the budget process was that because of that ZOO funding, we could have in the general fund a deficit of up to two million dollars. And the recommended budget that you saw when we briefed you back in mid-June, and then what was recommended actually in July, had a modest surplus in the general fund, I think a little less than a hundred thousand. So... So, we can go all the way to a two million dollar deficit in the general fund based on the principles you had outlined for us. And so, while a deficit generally is maybe a little bit troubling because these are, it's a one-time expense, under our fund balance policy, we're permitted to draw up to two million dollars out of the general fund. So, that may just be something to keep in the back of your mind as you consider what changes you want to make tomorrow. So, if you wanted to transfer within finance, maybe you wanted, you know, Lorian and her team have done such a fantastic job with this budget and maybe you're really annoyed with me as the CFO and so maybe you take forty thousand dollars from the CFO budget and give it to the budget office budget. So, in that case, we're gonna change our number, forty thousand, and this would be that transfer we talked about, we're gonna select that instead. And so, in that case, you can see, we go right back to the same forecasted operating income, we go back to the same budget overall. Nothing changes because we have just simply reallocated spending within a department. So, then you can see on your sheet, six, seven, and eight, this is if you only wanted to add some new revenue to the budget and while that theory sounds delightful, I don't know where it would come from at this point and so I don't want to waste your time talking about those options unless you're interested. Okay? So, this will be Levy Live, we'll have it ready to go if you want. We do have a fire version of this also that's already preloaded to, with an option to drop the mill levy rate from what was proposed to a rate that would not require that truth and taxation resolution. And so, that'll also be a motion that is ready for you tomorrow on here, depending on which one you want to do. So, but that again, will take action because it is different from what was in the proposed budget. So, any questions on Levy Live I can answer or discussion about how you want tomorrow to go?
Quick question. So, at the beginning of your presentation, you held up the two motions?
Mm-hmm.
And that would be, basically those motions would be to, to pass the recommended manager's budget?
Right.
As is?
Right.
But then you mentioned that other motions are being prepared?
If, if-
Or, did you, what did you say?
If you all have reached out to ask about specific motions, then we will have those prepared for you and at your seat in the morning.
Okay, now.
And so, then we also have-
I have not, I have not reached out, but how would we rest, if somebody's, if somebody's reached out to you to say, "I want to do a motion," the first time that I will see it will be at the meeting?
Unless the other commissioner has opted to walk the halls, while we're preparing those, they're considered draft or at least that's how we've historically done it and we can certainly consider doing that differently going forward.
Okay.
And that's just kind of the, the practice we've had.
So, then, I can't speak for the rest, but I, then I will see that for the first time and I'll have to make a decision right then about, do I like this or not?
So, do you have staff input for these other motions that people are asking you to prepare on recommendations? You know, hitting us at the last minute at the point where we're getting ready to adopt something is a little difficult.
Well, so, one of, one of the motions that I've been asked to prepare by a couple folks has to do with the eighty-four thousand dollars that was in that Aging Issue paper that was prepared and sent out. And so, that, that's information that's been disseminated, I think. Other than that, it would be issues that have been discussed. There is some, some staff feedback on that and some not. I think it's, and, and it'll be up for discussion tomorrow and if it, it fails, it will fail and we can always come back and revisit it.
Okay.
But, you'll put all that into a scenario for us if we want it?
Well, right, well, we'll have motions for you and so, if you choose to make that motion, then we would enter it at that point. But that way, we like knowing what motions potentially can come before us because it gives us an opportunity to prepare for that so that we're not kind of trying to guess as we go on something because once it's adopted, at least in those tax funds, there's very little we can do to make a whole lot of changes after that's done.
Any questions on Levy Live?
All right, thank you, Lindsey.
What does she have, Mr. Manager?
Sit.
Okay, looking at Mark, you're right, reminds me, we haven't done much with hiring a new appraiser. Can you tell us where we're at on that?
I'm sorry, there was one other item and then we can talk about that. Did you want to talk about K E C legislative platform with them very quickly?
I was going to bring some issues to get on the K E C platform, Chairman Mr. Schuman. I, I'm sure you remember getting an email from the Kansas Association of Counties a week or so ago saying the deadline for submitting them was today and they were going to have their first Legislative Policy Committee meeting on Friday. Since then, I've, I've seen their latest form on submitting legislative issues and they're showing now that the deadline is August twenty-third. So, rather than rush this matter through right now, I think I'm gonna bring, spend a few more days on it and bring it back to you at another, another time. So, we have, we have some more time on this.
Good. All right, yeah, back to my question. Yeah, where are we at on that?
Uh, next Thursday, we have interviews set up in the morning. We have a community panel that will be interviewing the, probably two to three candidates that we'll have set up.
Okay, very good.
So, we'll be bringing those-
I just hadn't heard anything for a while on that.
Pardon me?
I just had not heard anything on that for a while.
We'll be bringing those, the recommendations of those candidates to you after, after we have those interviews.
And just looking at a calendar, so tomorrow is the seventh. We do not have a meeting next week. No, I'm not planning on a staff unless there's something critical that comes up that we need to have a staff meeting on Tuesday, so, so our next meeting would be twenty-one then. So, hopefully, if we do these interviews next week, we can go into executive session on the twenty-first and let you all vet the final two or three candidates and then depending on how you feel after that, we can do two-two-ones or one-one-one-one-ones with those candidates and let you each have another shot with them. So, we'll, we'll play it by ear, but that's kind of the time sequence of how we'll try to roll that.
Okay. All right, anything else, Mr. Manager?
That's all we have, sir.
Commissioners, anything this morning?
Just briefly, we're in the middle of trying to hire a new director for WAMPO. Phil is retiring here in the near future. We had three folks that we did Skype interviews with about a week ago and we narrowed those down to two and we brought one of them in yesterday for a face-to-face. We're bringing the other one in on next Monday for a face-to-face and the Executive Committee of WAMPO is the ones that are doing those interviews and following the, the face-to-face on next Monday. Our next WAMPO meeting is Tuesday, actually, so we will probably go into executive session with WAMPO on Tuesday to discuss those candidates. So, I just thought I'd bring everyone up to speed on what I know right now. Anything else from Commissioners? Hey, staff, anything? Sheriff, you got anything this morning?
Okay.
Very good, nothing from the clerk? I know Tabitha has something, so.
Hi, new, an update today, this primary election day for Sedgwick County, it's two five nine, just refreshing, I think, sure you can read that number. So far today, we've had three thousand one hundred and sixty-two people cast ballots at polling completion, so we're over four percent turnout providing that with early and by now, which is about normal for an election of this type. We have four voters who are reporting that they're currently asking this question about how to close down tonight at seven P M. So, if you have not voted, please could use them. Today is also the voter registration deadline for the August the seventh special election and the day's school district file election and tomorrow we begin mail-in ballots for that election. So, also tomorrow, we select, we randomized two positions we're supposed to audit, which would be the two positions we have on ballots, so that's not very random, but then the one person in precincts will be randomly selected for our post-election audit as well. So, we will be trying to wrap up this election and go live with the next election at the same time, which takes a little bit of extra effort, but it's okay, it's not a big one coming up afterwards, so we're fine.
Very good, and when is the governor coming in to ceremonial sign Senate Bill one thirty? What day?
December sixteenth.
Very good, you got a time, location?
Two P M.
Two P M.
We're still working on locations.
Okay.
We'll figure out how many people to expect.
All right, and that's on all of our calendars? Very good. All right, oh, the other date coming up that I know of is Quad County will be on September the ninth this year. We are, this September ninth, we're hosting it. We're going to host it at Intrust Bank Arena and have them cater the luncheon. I passed around to the Commissioners who were available yesterday, the menu and I got a consensus on chicken, so. But actually, anything that you eat over at Intrust Bank Arena is very, very good, so it's not just chicken. So, we look forward to that. The event will have Wendy and Jen giving a briefing on what we're doing with behavioral health and following the event, we're going to have ability for them to tour the arena if they'd like to see what's going on in the arena. So, that's coming up on September the ninth.
Chairman, that's also the day of the Legislative Caravan, so I don't know how we want to discuss that or what, what the appropriate setting is for that.
So, they're coming in on the eighth, I think, the night of the eighth. Let me share the mic with Tim here, but I think what we might want to think about is something like a dinner on the eighth. And then, on the ninth, I know they had exact tactical kinds of things that they wanted to get out into the, into the staff to talk about, so I don't know how much time there'll be for us then, but I, I think we ought to focus on, on the eighth.
I, I think the only free time that they're gonna have is probably gonna be in the evening. They're starting out in the morning in Topeka, come, and they're gonna stop at Eldray, the correctional facility, then they'll go to the Community Crisis Center and then hit some more spots in the community, but that evening then they should have available and then in the morning, they're heading out to other places across the state.
I believe it's the ninth, though.
I thought it was the ninth.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, Monday-
The Monday, whatever date the Monday is.
We'll coordinate that to where we can pull things off.
And are we gonna have a dinner for them or what's our plan?
I think that's, let, let Tim and I kind of get the schedule.
I thought the zoo would be a fun place to do it.
Yeah, we can, we can look at a lot of options and then we'll, when Mike and I do our weekly meetings with you all this week, we can talk about the actual strategy of this.
Zoo or exploration place might be a good place to, to host it, too.
One thing I mentioned to Chairman was to, I, I really would like to invite boots-on-the-ground folks who are kind of doing the work. I think, you know, having department heads is important, but I, I mean, would it be possible to have some folks who are kind of doing things in, in, in the county that could meet with these legislators to talk about what they do?
We can certainly talk to Senator McGinn about that. This is really her tour and so I don't know what she has planned for each of the stops yet. We don't have that level of detail yet, but they're just gonna spend a short period of time in each setting that they go to.
For the dinner, I'm talking, for the dinner, to invite some folks, the boots-on-the-ground in, in the county that work for us, that might not be director level, but-
Sure. I think the dinner's wide open.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Let's go to work. Thank you.